My name is Tommy. And I'm in second, no, third.
Yeah. That's a new school year. You're all right, buddy.
My name is Dex Andrew and I'm in second grade.
My name is Connor and I'm in second grade.
My name is TJ and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Jolindy Henson and I'm in third grade.
My name is Trent Henson and I'm in first grade.
Right back here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We got a city.
I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on August 14th as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on August 14th, 2017, as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order going to open forum. Do I jump on?
Yep, I might have. Yep, we got a little red carpet recognition and some board salutes. So we'll pen that motion.
We'll put that on hold. Motion to table.
Hi, I'm Isabel Faust and I'm in ninth grade.
Hi, I'm Alessandra Reynolds and I'm in ninth grade.
I'm Justin Seahan, I'm in ninth grade.
I'm Boris Miller and I'm in ninth grade as well.
Hi, I'm Beth Joel and I'm in ninth grade.
I'm Alira DeSous and I'm in ninth grade.
Well, that was fantastic because they're all ninth graders. We're here to share with you our commitment to graduate from the Hempstead High School class of 2021. It's something that all students sign the very first day they're at Hempstead. We tell them all the wonderful things that are going to happen over the next four years, but also to keep an eye on the prize, which is graduation three and a half short years from now. So we invite the superintendent and the board president and the secretary of the board to come over and sign. We will proudly display that at the student entrance and students will walk by that every day as a reminder of why they're there. Thank you.
Somebody brought a pack.
Okay. Somebody did. All right.
Thank you. We could get a quick picture. That would be great.
Up in the middle of students. Uncle behind you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one here. We want to give a huge board salute goes out to the voters of Dubuque for supporting the instrumental support levy at last week's school election. The ISL is a critical funding stream for the district that allows us to further support the educational programs of the district. The ILS continues to fund the salaries of teachers in the kindergarten program and the salaries of some teachers in grades one through three to keep class sizes lower than they would be otherwise. This also helps fund instrumental supplies and upgrading of outdated equipment items used for classrooms, curriculum initiatives, science laboratories, industrial technology, and other instrumental support programs. Our students will tremendously benefit from this funding source remaining through 2029. And we were able to save the additional expense of the special education next year by placing it on this year's ballot. So thank you Dubuque for supporting the levy.
I have one here as well. Congratulations to last year's class of 2017 for outstanding work on their ACT tests. The ACT results were published in the local newspaper approximately a week and a half ago. The district recently received its ACT report and we are pleased to see our district-wide average shows students achieving above the state average in their score. Our students' scores also exceed the state average in college readiness indicators. The ACT is just one measure of academic success and we always try to improve, but we are pleased to see strong performance by our students. Congratulations to the class of 2017 and the many teachers who contributed to the success.
Mr. President, I have a board salute. It goes to the many staff members who worked to ensure that the district's Anytime, Anywhere Learning Initiative launched successfully. An initiative of this size is an incredible undertaking and the district did an outstanding job purchasing, preparing, and distributing the new tech book devices for this year's ninth graders as well as training teachers in class how to use them. Many individuals played a role in this program's launch and special recognition goes to Technology Director Colby Culbertson and members of the technology staff, Director of Secondary Education, David Olson, Lead Technology Coach, David Moller, Hempstead Principal, Lee Colker, and Senior Principal, Dan Johnson, Hempstead Technology Coach, Megan Leahy, and Senior Technology Coach, Chip Bishop. These individuals and many more helped this new project get off the ground and it's very exciting to see it already begin to enhance the way we deliver education and instruction at the high school level. So many thanks to them.
Great. Any more? All right. Well, since there is actually a motion on the table, Mr. Barton had moved that we suspend the rules of order and go to open forum and Mr. Prohaska had seconded. All this other stuff's just been discussion. So with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So we are in open forum. If there is anyone in the audience wishing to address the board at this time, please step forward and state your name and your address.
Paul Kurt, 3485 Echol Hills, Bellevue. I am understanding that the cost per student is about $6,100 per year. And my question is, how much is that federal dollars? I would like to see the control come back to Stan. I have no idea what that ratio is. So if you can email me or send me back, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Will do. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to address the board?
I move that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve those items listed in the consent agenda. Are there any board members wishing to pull any items from the consent agenda for separate consideration? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Brings us to Facilities Support Services. Oh, I'm sorry, no. We're going to do Ed Programs first. Okay. Ed Programs, Policy, Strategy Committee, Ms. Whitman, we have a Title I update.
Yes, we have a Title I update and I believe that Heather Gudenkauf and May Hispchen will give us some more detail.
Great. Are you going to project?
No.
No?
Not going to project. Good evening, I am Heather Gudenkauf. I am the Title I Coordinator for Dubuque Schools and I'm here to give you an update on Title I budgeting for the 1718 school year. As some of you may know, for the past several years, Title I has worked under No Child Left Behind Act and the sanctions and requirements that went behind that. In the past year or so, we have started with the Every Student Succeeds Act, which is the new federal legislation to support our students. And so we have some new rules that we're working under for Title I. Title I is a federally funded program that supports schools and districts who have a high percentage or high number of children of low-income families. And the goal of Title I is to help students reach the challenging academic standards of our district. And so with the asset requirements and our new budgeting requirements, we have seen some changes in the sense that the funds in the past have typically gone right to the district level. And then at the district level, because of the sanctions set aside by No Child Left Behind, the requirements of school choice, of after-school tutoring, and other things that we needed to try and get that back into the hands of the schools so they could make the decisions that they felt were best for their kids. So I believe you have a budget sheet in front of you, I'm hoping.
What is the page that is showing? 134, thank you.
And this budget sheet gives you a sense of how the breakdown of Title I funds will be displaced this school year. You'll see that we have a working budget of just over $2 million for Title I and we do have some set asides that we are required by.
Could we just, could we project this? Colby, is there a reason we can't project it on the side screens? Just so the people in the audience can see what we're talking about.
Sure.
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
It's taking extra minutes, but I think it's important to see the dollars that are generated and how they're spent.
Do you have the packet? It's really small. Well, it does say 1718. Yeah, underneath it, it does say 1718. Pardon me. There it says 1718 allocation.
So it'll be projected in two places, actually three, if we could turn this one off and turn that one on. Sorry. There are three projectors in this room. Tell it might take a second.
Yeah.
Technical difficulties. Can we get that one off? Oh, there it comes.
Okay. So hopefully you could read the fine print there for those of you following along. But we start our Title I budget this year with just over $2 million and we do have some set asides that we are required to put aside for some other entities. So for example, we hire an interventionist for Lother Academy that works with our Title I students. We also serve our Holy Family Partners. They also have students who qualify for Title I services. So as a result, we have three part-time Title I interventionists serving four of the parochial, the Holy Family Schools in Dubuque. We have a homeless requirement, which is new this year to us. A certain percentage is set aside of our budget, so $26,000 is used to support our families who are considered homeless and that is district-wide. That does not just include the five Title I buildings. So any student who is considered homeless receives some support based on that funding. One of the major requirements of Title I is parent involvement and we will talk a little bit more about our decision, the direction we've gone with our parent involvement piece this year. We always have to set aside indirect costs. There's a little bit of leftover from No Child Left Behind. We want to make sure that the students who have chosen a school choice gets transportation to the school through fifth grade. So we always set aside a little bit for that and then administrative costs and some other items. So that leaves us with about a $1.6 million budget to be used within our schools. And so that money is disseminated between the five Title I buildings based on the number of free and reduced children in their building and there's a per pupil amount for that. So you can see that we've broken this down by each school. And some of the things that we are able to do based on this funding, we are able to continue with our after-school tutoring program. We met with the principals and in looking at data and the needs of the kids, the principals felt like that was a really strong program for our students. So that is available to all students, Title I students who qualify academically in the five Title I buildings. So we've set aside a percentage for each building there. We set up, of course, supplies for the teachers, Title I books, and that can include both reading and math because we have added math, Title I math, to a few of our buildings. Some of the principals looked at their data and a few of the principals decided that was a route that they wanted to try this year to work with Title I math. And so they've done some hiring with that. We set aside a large amount of money also for building-based professional development based on the school's individual data. So the principals and the staff, their building leadership teams are the most equipped to be able to decide what their school needs. And then as you can see in the staffing other column, there's a significant amount of money set aside there. That includes, we'll pay for all staffing, including current Title I that we've had in the past, Title I reading teachers, and the addition of some exciting pieces, so like the Title I math. Some schools have decided to add an additional Title I reading teacher. We have two models for Title I in Dubuque schools. We have a targeted model and a school-wide model. The school-wide model is at Prescott in Audubon and that simply means that a school-wide Title I building, every child in the building is considered a Title I student. Every teacher is considered a Title I teacher. Every staff member is considered a Title I staff member. So with that, there's a real flexibility in how we use those Title I funds. We are able to hire, for example, if you look at Audubon there, you'll see that they have four, the Title I staffing column, they have four reading teachers. They decided to add a classroom teacher and a multi-cat special education teacher. They have that flexibility based on their data to do that in a school-wide program. Now, a targeted program is a little bit different. It's a more traditional model that we've used in the past and it is where students qualify based on academic need and we target certain grade levels. So we've always started in Dubuque schools, we focus on first graders first because we feel like early intervention is a very powerful thing. First grade, kindergarten, second, third, fourth, fifth. So there's a hierarchy of the students that we serve. And the Title I teachers can only work with those students who need that academic intervention in reading or math in this case for this year. So we are in two worlds right now. We have targeted and school-wide. All the Title I buildings are looking to go school-wide in the future because of the flexibility with the funding and the budgeting and the ability to really zero in on what each individual building needs. Along with the staffing, the cost of staffing, schools are able to purchase diagnostic materials to help determine what needs students have in reading and math, the math teachers as well, as well as some additional professional learning opportunities. Are there any questions that I can answer for you before May talks a little bit more about a very exciting part of our Title I world this year, which are the connection specialists? Any questions?
I think the key to this very briefly is the change in philosophy and the dollars. It's really giving the principals some decision-making autonomy about what's needed in their building. You'll see that the staffing has been tweaked based on the needs of the particular students in the building for the year. So I think that's one of the things that we're obviously moving towards as a district, but here you see it play out firsthand. I think May, you do want to do a brief synopsis of... Thank you, Heather.
So I have a document that I thought was in your packet, but in case it's not...
I believe it.
...make its way in, then there are some copies for you. And I have some extras, too. Hi. So I'm here tonight to talk about the homeschool liaisons and the school connection specialist. So you saw in the budget that Heather just showed you that each school hired a school connection specialist. Last year, we hired the homeschool liaisons. So what you see in front of you is just a job description of the homeschool liaisons and the school connection specialists. Both roles work with at-risk kids. Both roles try to improve students' engagement with school and both roles work with parents. How they do that is a little bit different and how students are eligible to work with each of the positions are a little bit different. The homeschool liaisons work with students who are considered at risk for the state definition of students who are at risk, who don't feel connected to school, who perhaps have behavioral, mental health, attendance issues, involvement in MTSS, et cetera. So that is our formula that the state gives us for determining if a student is at risk. The school connection specialists work with students who are considered at risk for reading. So a little bit different. The homeschool liaisons work primarily with children who have more behavioral, mental health needs and the school connection specialists work with students who have academic needs. So you'll see there are a lot of overlap between the positions and things that are different. The school connection specialists are really targeting students and their families, helping them to feel connected to school. One of the things that impacts students' academic achievement is their attendance at school. So the school connection specialists will be working with parents to educate them about the importance of getting their children to school to help improve attendance as well as those academic skills. Reading, reading is a big one because it's a Title I-founded position. So helping parents, just little things like, hey, did you read a book to your child last night? Or giving them strategies to try and engage parents in student reading specifically. Heather just talked about the targeted schools versus the school-wide schools. So same thing applies for the school connection specialist. At the school-wide school, they can work with all students, but at the targeted students they'll primarily be focusing on that K2 student population. And again, the positions overlap a little bit. The positions have some uniqueness to them where the homeschool liaisons focus more on student behavior and engaging parents to talk about how do we address your students' behavior? So any questions?
So which one of these is actually the new?
The school connection specialist.
The school connection specialist.
Homeschool liaisons were new last year. Yeah, school connection specialist.
Well, I think it's good to see that we're making some efforts, we're trying different things to see how they work out, that we're not just sitting back, we're exerting ourselves, making efforts to improve our reading scores, improve our students' attendance, behavior, et cetera. So...
I've said for a long time, Jim, that it's really about relationships. And both of these positions really strive to build relationships with parents and with students and so they feel connected.
The family.
And I'm glad that math is part of it now. So there's a focus on two things. It's not just reading, it's the math that is really helps students get through.
We just want to be really clear that we do differentiate in some staffing things, primarily due to Title I, but the professional development, the purchase of materials, but most importantly, the positions that are funded through it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you, May and Heather. Another thing, in our educational committee meeting, we had David Olson. He did a follow-up on books that are, you know, books and authors that are novels that are introduced to the high schools. There is a course syllabus and course guidelines, so parents are more aware of what's being taught and in addition to posters. So that information is available that parents can find out looking at a poster online to see what books are being introduced to their students and who the authors are. And that was it for the educational.
Okay. Thank you. Facilities Support Services Committee, Mr. Byten.
I have a few motions for the board this evening. The first is I move the Board of Education approve Change Order 9 to Conlon Construction on the senior high school renovation project in the increased amount of $25,994.84.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve Change Order Number 9 to Conlon Construction on the senior high school renovation project in the increased amount of $25,994.84. Any discussion?
This was reviewed during our Support Services meeting and a project of this nature, it's unusual to have adjustments, both subtractions and additions, and this is simply one more in the process.
And we sit very well in...
Yes, in overall.
...relation to our tendencies. Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Second motion this evening is I move the Board of Education approve the submission of the request to the school budget review committee in the amount of $4,000, $4,722, excuse me, $4,722,971, or as determined by the Iowa Department of Education following DE audit review in modified supplemental amount to provide 100% spending authority for the 2017 special education deficit funded through the cash reserve levy. Kevin, you may just want to highlight what this means.
Second.
Sorry.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Discussion?
This, as you know, board, this is a levy, or cash reserve portion of the levy that we ask every year to get our spending authority for the excess dollars of the special education program. I believe last year it was a little over 4.9 million, so it's a little lower than last year at 4.7 million. But we need to ask the SBR to see to recoup those dollars for the deficit that occurred during the last fiscal year. And as I said, we've done this for many, many years and it's a thing we do each and every year.
And I saw Kevin fall off his chair when you were going to approve $4,000.
Yeah, sorry.
$70.
I forgot I mentioned that.
Trying to figure out where he finds the other $4 million. It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the submission of the request to the school budget review committee in the amount of $4,722,971, or as determined by the Iowa Department of Education following the DE audit review in modified supplemental amount to provide 100% spending authority for 2017 special education deficit funded through a cash reserve levy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Likewise, a similar motion. I move the Board of Education approve the submission of the request to the school budget review committee in the amount of $88,480, or as determined by the Iowa Department of Education following DE audit review in modified supplemental amount to provide 100% spending authority for 2017 actual ELL program costs funded through a cash reserve levy.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the... It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the submission of the Request to the School Budget Review Committee in the amount of $88,480, or as determined by the Iowa Department of Education following the DE audit review, in modified supplemental amount to provide 100% spending authority for 2017 actual ELL program costs funded through a cash reserve levy. Any discussion?
For the board, this is also an annual request that we ask you to, again, request from the SBRC, the spending authority for the deficit in the ELL program, which is English language learners. We always have a challenge with the dollars that we get for funding that program. We have students from many different countries, speaking many different languages, and we usually spend more than the funding that we get to provide those students with extra instruction to help them get up to speed with the English language.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Keller.
And Mr. President, although not a motion for the board to consider, I would describe that one of the other activities at our recent meeting was an announcement about a pending two-contract negotiation with Dash, the swimming program, to be partners in the building of our new pool facility. I know Mr. Ryan Gans wants to share a word or two.
If I could, before he shares, could we vote on the motion? It was on the table, so...
Sure.
It was moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That motion carries, and Kevin's much more comfortable.
There you go.
Okay. Well, I guess we sort of made an announcement last week after Support Services meeting, but I guess just for the larger viewing audience and anybody who's not aware, you know that we've spent a long time, six-plus years, talking about a swimming pool, a replacement pool for, a pool that's currently at Hempstead that's aging and beginning to show signs of wear, and Bill and Charlie, you know, sleep lightly at night, afraid that they'll get a phone call, the pool's empty. So the board approved a $7 million expense for that replacement. We contracted with the architects to come up with some designs. We were very pleasantly surprised with what we were able to do with that seven, $7.2 million, which was a stretch pool with eight lanes, diving well, movable bulkhead. The reality is, though, with the number of students that we have swimming, both at Hempstead and Senior, in combination with the young folks who swim for Dash, we could certainly support a wider pool. And the wider, the width makes a difference because if we can go from 60 feet wide to 75 feet wide, then during practice, students can swim lengthwise, which increases the number of practice lanes, almost doubles, not quite doubles, the number of lanes, which means we can practice more quickly. Our young, our student athletes are home earlier for homework, for getting to their job, if they have a job, just all types of things. But also then makes a lot more time available for other community folks to use that. So we met with all of the folks we had talked with previously about the pool, knowing that it was about a million-dollar price tag to go from 60 feet wi- 60-foot wide to 75-foot wide. And the entity that sort of jumped on board the quickest and most enthusiastically was Dash. So we're very proud. We've got some Dash folks, some Dash leadership here in the, in the room tonight. But, so they are committed to raising the difference between the pool that we initially proposed for $7.2 million and the wider pool. It's truly a win-win for the district. It gets our student athletes in and out quicker, saving them more valuable time, like I said, for homework, whatever, but also making a lot more space available and better space available for the young folks in the community. Board has long had a philosophy that when we build a facility, a gym, a gazelle field, a swimming pool, that we not only want to use it during the school day as a vital part of our educational program, but we want to quickly be able to allow others to come in and use it, too, because taxpayer dollars are purchasing this. So the more folks in a community, particularly young people who are using it, that's a win-win. So we're very excited about where we'll be a year and a half or so from now with, with the pool. We had a very nice proposed pool, but certainly is, goes from a sort of a good-to-great situation with, with the addition of Dash as a partner. I'm not sure that was brief, but...
I'd like to make just a brief remark. I'm glad to see that we can share our facility with other community partners. I'm glad to see that the partnership is also somewhat financial. And I'd like to comment about, I had a daughter who was involved in Dash many years ago, and it's a very worthwhile program. And not only for supplying our high school teams with swimmers, great swimmers, but also just an aspect of exercise and the participation level at that age group is immense. And I want to compliment Dash for that. Doug?
Keep up the good work. Sounds like he's still campaigning almost.
No.
I'm sure I misread that. Probably the only people that are excited are the student athlete swimmers who heard the superintendent tell them twice that the time we've saved them by going to a wider pool and partnering with Dash is dedicated to homework.
Yeah, there you go. There you go.
So, three times maybe not.
Time management.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bytine, anything else?
That's it.
Fantastic. Great. New business.
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution declaring an official intent under Treasury Regulation 1.150-2 to issue debt to reimburse the Dubuque Community School District for certain original expenditures paid in connection with specified projects.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the resolution declaring an official intent under Treasury Regulation 1.150-2 to issue debt to reimburse the Dubuque Community School District for certain original expenditures paid in connection with specific projects. Before we have a roll call, Mr. Keller, do you want to give the brief Cliff Notes on this?
Yeah. The bonds that we were questioning are going to be sold in December, December 1st, we hope to close on them. They are to be used for the continued program at senior high school, the project that's going on there. We have about 12 and 1/2 million left as of June 30th to pay on that project. So we're going to use the 10 million to help support that program.
And those bonds we paid off through sales tax.
Correct. All those bonds that we borrow are paid off through the collection of our sales tax revenue.
Correct. Any other discussion or questions? Roll call.
Mr. Barton.
Aye.
Mr. Bytine.
Aye.
Mr. Donahue.
Aye.
Mr. Prohaska.
Aye.
Ms. Ryan.
Aye.
Ms. Seeger.
Aye.
Ms. Whitman.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I move that the Board of Education receive and file the abstract of votes for the election on September 12th, 2017.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file the abstract of votes for the election on September 12th, 2017. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve participation in the Instructional Support Program Levy after election resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve participation in the Instructional Support Program Levy after election resolution. A roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bytine.
Yes.
Mr. Donahue.
Aye.
Mr. Prohaska.
Aye.
Ms. Ryan.
Aye.
Ms. Seeger.
Aye.
Ms. Whitman.
Aye.
Mr. Barton.
Aye.
Great. That brings us to board member or administrative issues. Any, not administrative issues at this point?
Not at this time.
All right. It also brings us to that point in the program where we have to bid farewell to a couple of board members. And certainly Tara fulfilled a four-year term for the school district, and Tara, on behalf of the entire board and the school district, I'd like to thank you for your, for your service. I know we, we taxed you a lot, being a mother of young children, and our schedules sometimes don't necessarily align, but we never questioned your commitment to the district, and so we thank you for your four years of service. And there are, there's partying gifts. Hang on.
Finally, after four and eight years, you received a paycheck. Well, a plaque.
So are you gonna...
Yeah, maybe. Do you want to do a picture here? Is that the, so I don't know if you want to...
Sure.
So...
I don't make the picture look any better.
Sure.
So Tara, come out. Introduce yourself.
Great.
Remember, we're using outside voices here. So you stand in the middle. You stand in the middle. I'll get up here. Look taller.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're free to say some things if you want.
I don't know what I could say. I appreciate four years on the board, and I don't know, it's a spectacular place, and the administration here is amazing, so you guys are all great to work with. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bytine, no magic to...
Give me a couple of comments.
Sure, please. Take a shot.
Just a couple of things I want to say. While we're doing...
Am I getting roasted?
We're doing Tara. Oh, I'm sorry. The shot's going to come for you, Mr. Bytine. This is the nice part.
I wasn't prepared for responses to that.
No, no.
Craig who? Oh, Bytine. He's, oh, he's leaving us, too, isn't he? Tara, I just wanted to mention, you have been so easy to work with as a school board member and very much appreciated. You, and citizens need to know how much you were in this for kids, and just how good you were in terms of always caring about how citizens felt, too. So just a pleasure to work with there. This is, I've been on the board on and off for a number of terms. There has never been anyone any easier to work with than Tara Seeger. So thank you.
Thank you.
I agree.
I just would like to say, I kind of indicated this to Tara, probably the very few school boards where you have a board member and you have a former student that are serving on the same board. And I was very proud of you, and you were a great board member, and I thank you for your service, and best wishes to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate the work you put into it.
Thanks. I enjoyed it.
All right. Now we pull a rabbit out of our hat, and we get to...
Oh, you get more years, so...
A fond for, well, obviously after two school board, full year, full terms. His first, or his first year of his second term, he served as the president and really oversaw the district at a very difficult time. And certainly through his leadership, we were able to get the guy to my right here. And together with the hard work of the rest of the board, it's, that's why we're at the good place that we are today. Craig, we always, we always give Craig a hard time because he has a vocabulary that far exceeds any of ours collectively. But we usually stop him at the use of really fancy words. After he uses about the third or fourth one, we give him the high five, and he knows to bring it down for our level, which really helps. But Craig, it was a pleasure serving with you, and you and I worked through a couple of sleepless nights, I know, as, as we tackled some of those issues. But I can tell you that Craig's leadership was instrumental in, like I said, getting us to the right place. And that doesn't come easy, and a lot, a lot of people are often afraid to go down that road. But his commitment to kids and, and this school district as a whole is the reason that, that he did it. And for that, I'm, I'll always be thankful.
Thank you.
Go ahead. I know you got a long list here. We could project them, but...
There once was a guy named Bytine. His language was rather pristine. He loved his linguistics, not words too simplistic, and he always loved venting his spleen. That was maybe the nastiest, ugliest of Craig's higher-level vocabulary. Venting your spleen. Will miss Craig's refined vocabulary. Now our chats will be much more rudimentary. He has served us well, and his word choice was swell, but I can finally leave home my dictionary.
Come on, copy that.
You got it. I'll correct it and return it to you.
Of course you will. Correct the spelling.
You knew that was coming.
Well, I'll just say, I appreciate, when I first came on the board, your mentoring and advice, and, you know, we not always agreed on things, but we always came to the table in agreement of how we're going to move forward. So it was a pleasure to be able to serve with you, and we will find a way to keep you connected.
Thank you.
I would like to say, I've only been on the board two years, and it was a pleasure to meet both of you, get to know both of you. I hope you continue to do service somewhere, wherever your passion is, because you both have a lot to offer. Thank you.
Back to Craig. I kind of mentioned Tara. So Craig, it's been a pleasure serving with you. Craig and I were on a city commission together a number of years ago, and on that commission as well as the school board, your dedication is very noticed. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is it my turn? Oh, good.
I was going to say something first, Craig.
Oh, go ahead.
I was going to actually address it to both you and Tara.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So for the folks at home, to, to put yourself out there, to run for election, to serve on a school board, that means many meetings, lots of data, lots of new learning, potential phone calls. You tend to hear from the folks who aren't happy as opposed to those who are. But know that that's at the heart of why Dubuque Community School District is the school district that it is. That's why our system works, because we elect folks who care about kids enough to put themselves sort of in harm's way to make those decisions. And those decisions aren't always easy, sometimes financially, sometimes personnel-wise, sometimes based on curriculum. But it takes reasonable people who can disagree and come to a conclusion of the best way to move forward. And so I think both of you have done a fantastic job with that. You certainly have made my job as superintendent easier. If you do the math, you know, 11,000 students, give or take, 44, 88,000 students benefited from the fact that you've given up time from family, from other pursuits to be with us, not only on Monday nights, which is seen on, on the television, but on many support services and programs, strategic planning sessions, DCEL meetings, on and on and on. And for, at the end of the day, a plaque that says, "Thank you." That's really the only, other than, of course, the gratitude of, you know, the 80,000 people that called Dubuque home. So thank you for your work and for making my job much, much better, and for, of course, and most importantly, the students.
Here at the Craig-Bytine Love Fest, so we're going to get a picture.
If you'll just afford me a brief moment just to express some appreciation. First of all, it's been an honor to serve the past eight years. Have the highest regard for each of my colleagues. I really do. You mentioned disagreement. I've always felt that we, we all came to the table with the same passion or same interests, and we always settled in the best way possible, and so I much appreciate that. I want to express my appreciation to Joni Lucas, our board secretary, the unsung hero of this organization. Joni, you were always there to answer questions, help the process to make things move smoother, and I really appreciate your guidance of me as an early board member and reminding me of our responsibility as an older board member. I want also to thank the executive committee for the district, Kobe, Kevin, Phil, Bill, Mike. What a team you've got, Stan, and a pleasure to work with. The two things I'm most proud of was the year that was board president that we did, as Mike suggests, we as a group came together and chose what I think has been the best superintendent this district has ever had and continues to be. So I'm just delighted to know that I'm leaving the board with that in place, and also the strategic plan that we set forward that is a purposeful, actionable document. And finally, I wish to thank and congratulate Nancy Anderson and Jim on their election. I have learned one thing, there is not a scintilla of authority.
Reject the definition of scintilla.
There's not a scintilla of authority in individual chair on this diet. It resides in the body and the authority of this, of this table and what we do together. Remember that. The board's job is to give direction, not directive. And I know you'll carry that forward. And other than that, I will continue to serve in the community in various ways, and I always hope to be a friend of the board and a friend of the district and continue to advocate for our kids, and it's been an honor for me to serve. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Great. Scintilla noun, a tiny trace or spark of a specified quality or feeling, synonyms, particle, iota. Proper usage. Proper usage.
Of course.
True form.
I move that the Board of Education appoint Joni Lucas Board Secretary as temporary chairperson.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Board of Education appoint Joni Lucas Board Secretary as a temporary chairperson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
This will adjourn to 2016-17 Board of Directors, and we will have a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
We will begin with roll call. Mr. Barton.
Here.
Ms. Bradley.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Prohaska.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Sancy.
Here.
Ms. Whitman.
Here.
At this time, I would like to present the certificates of election to newly elected board members Nancy Bradley and Anderson Sancy and returning board member Jim Prohaska. And then, if you would please stand and raise your right hand, I would administer the oath of office. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Director in the Dubuque Community School District of Dubuque and Jackson Counties as now or hereafter required by law?
I do.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. You're welcome. Congratulations.
I do what I will. I do what I will. I do what I will. Do we clap?
Yes, we clap.
Congratulations. We're not that formal.
No, we're not.
I will now accept nominations for the Office of Board President. A second to the nomination is not necessary.
I nominate Tammy Ryan for the Office of Board President.
If there are no further nominations, I would entertain a motion to cast one ballot indicative of the unanimous election of Tammy Ryan to the Office of President.
So, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to appoint Tammy Ryan to the Office of President. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Tammy? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of President in the Dubuque Community School District of Dubuque and Jackson Counties, Iowa, now or hereafter required by law?
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I will now accept nominations for the Office of Board Vice President.
I would like to nominate Tom Barton.
Are there any further nominations for the Office of Vice President? If there are no further nominations, the nominations are closed. I entertain a motion to cast one ballot indicative of the unanimous election of Tom Barton to the Office of Vice President.
So, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? It has been moved and seconded that to cast one ballot indicative of the unanimous election of Tom Barton to the Office of Vice President. All in favor, signify by, I'm sorry, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
It's harder than it looks.
Yeah, it's hard work.
All right, now I get to give you the oath, Mr. Barton.
Oh, okay.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President in the Dubuque Community School District of Dubuque and Jackson Counties, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law?
I do. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I move that the Board of Education appoint Joni Lucas as secretary.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education appoint Joni Lucas as secretary. Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Better not be.
That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education appoint.
Wait, I have to give her an oath in office.
Oh, it's two. A lot of administering going on.
I know, a lot more work than I thought. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Secretary in the Dubuque Community School District of Dubuque and Jackson Counties as now or hereafter required by law?
I will.
Thank you. We would be lost without you.
Next, I move that the Board of Education appoint Kevin Kelleher as treasurer.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education appoint Kevin Kelleher as treasurer. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Treasurer to the Dubuque Community School District of Dubuque and Jackson Counties as now or hereafter required by law?
I will.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, now we can move on to the next set of new business.
I move that the Board of Education approve the following banks as depositories for district funds not to exceed $50 million each. American Trust and Savings Bank, Bankers' Trust, Dubuque Bank and Trust, Fidelity Bank and Trust, Premier Bank, and U.S. Bank.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the following banks as depositories for district funds not to exceed $50 million each. American Trust and Savings Bank, Bankers' Trust, Dubuque Bank and Trust, Fidelity Bank and Trust, Premier Bank, and U.S. Bank. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education establish the regular meeting of the Board of Education for the second Monday of each month at 5:30 p.m. at the Forum, and strategic plan meetings the fourth Monday in October, February, and May at 5:30 in the Forum.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education establish the regular meeting of the Board of Education for the second Monday of each month at 5:30 p.m. at the Forum, and strategic plan meetings the fourth Monday in October, February, and May at 5:30 p.m. at the Forum. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
I move the Board of Education name The Telegraph Herald as the official publication of record.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education name The Telegraph Herald as the official publication of record. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education name Firsty Carew, Jurgens, and Sudmeyer, P.C., as the official legal counsel of record.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education name Firsty Carew, Jurgens, and Sudmeyer, P.C., as the official legal counsel of record. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education authorize the Board Secretary to cast ballots for Keystone AEA Board of Directors, Sandra Gasman for District Six, and Nancy Bradley for District Seven.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education authorize the Board Secretary to cast ballots for Keystone AEA Board of Directors, Sandra Gasman for District Six, and Nancy Bradley for District Seven. Is there any discussion?
Nancy, you just retired.
I know.
You're doing, you're gonna be busy. You're in retirement than you were when you were working.
For the kids.
Great.
So, just so everybody's clear, this is something that was applied for, you put your name in for back in August. This is because I forgot how this process works, so I asked about, how does that work? And so, there was no other people wanting to do that, so we're glad you can do that.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. All right. We are adjourned. Is there any other?
Do you bang that?
All right. 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 All right.